Order.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of Wichita, a nation of freedom and justice.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jennifer for approval. A favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
On a fiscal stability, we're sent the minutes for matters on bills. There's no justice in any of those. So this is an action item.
All moved. Second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jennifer, all those in favor. Of signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero. Collaborative connections. Resolution for acceptance of gifts. So if you'd like to talk.
I had the opportunity to collaborate with the Mouchir, Ice Arena, and Community Education. And we put together a little small group hockey camp that students from Monticello could find on the community ed summer catalog. And I was the coach, and so it got me back at skates, which I love to do. And we did this as a collaborative piece where we knew that the money made from this was going to be all donated minus paying for the ice time. Was going to be donated to our Monticello Middle School and Monticello High School students in need so that they could enjoy the activities that they love. So it's going to be split equally so that can go into those two accounts.
Awesome, so thank you for giving us some valuable time to put down kids. I've enjoyed it probably more than they did.
Yeah, for sure. You definitely get your why back and after obviously a couple challenging years, but you get your why back, which is our students and they're, when they're looking at you with their awesome eager eyes. So it was experience.
Is the resolution?
I can read it, but first I want to say thank you too because my son was also a participant in that. Absolutely loved it and I think it's awesome back to our community in a way that you have a certain skill set that you can give back that way. So thank you. Therefore be out resolved by the Monticello School Board number eight eight two to gratefully accept the following donations. Eric Olson, Moose Hockey, and Monticello Community Education for one thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars to cover activity fees for students and families in need. Second.
Made by Jamie, made by Melissa. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move on to our innovation leadership. Admin team that have joined us, and so I'd like to introduce those individuals. Superintendent Olson.
Yeah, we're very excited this year when you have an opportunity to hire new leaders. One of the best things about entering into a draft like that is trying to find those experienced people that can come and make an impact. And we found a variety of experiences at different parts of the state, but they're coming together and going to fit our team really nice. Got to spend a week with them during an admin retreat. It was, it's called a retreat, but it's onsite, so it's, we don't travel too far. But from what I saw, they are just dynamic people that are going to make each one of us better. So I look forward to working alongside them, working with them and learning from them, but also helping them grow as a leader. We're going to start with Jason Borgstrom. So each leader is going to come up to the podium here, they're going to introduce themselves and then we have some magic ware for you. But Jason's going to come up and just give a brief explanation or description of his journey. And we look forward to introducing Jason Borgstrom, our new technology, Director of Technology.
Thanks Eric, my name is Jason Borgstrom, I'm the Director of Technology, formerly of a similar position in Becker. So I'm just super excited to be here. My education journey started with a learning management system. So it was a little journey into technology that way and that learning management system was Schoology. So I'm excited to be here, I'm excited to be working again with Schoology, I've been excited to be working with the wonderful staff and people in Monticello.
Welcome.
Just stay up here, we'll give some gifts here in a second. John Weekly.
You almost got away.
Yeah. Welcoming John Weekly back to Monticello and he'll share a little bit more.
Back twice.
That's right.
Hi, I'm John Weekly, I'm the Special Director for the Cooperative. My educational journey, I got into education a little late. I started off in community-based corrections probation up until two thousand and three. And then I entered a transition to teaching program that allowed you to switch gears. And so I did, and I became an EBD teacher here in Monticello from two thousand and three to, well, eight years, two thousand and eleven. And then I went to Saint Cloud for five years. I worked as a supervisor supervising their alternative programs, working with a few of their middle schools and elementary schools. And then I was lucky enough to get back to the Cooperative and I worked as a coordinator here for a little over four years servicing Monticello. And then with the co-op restructure, I found myself over in Saint Michael for a year on a, I call it a exchange program. And then I came back. I'm excited to be here.
Welcome.
Thanks. And now we're having Rachel Sanquist come forward as we got to steal her from the New Ulm School District and she'll share a little bit more about herself.
Yeah, hi everyone, my name's Rachel Sanquist. I am the middle school assistant principal here. Prior to that, I was in New Ulm, I was their middle school assistant principal as well. And leading me to that, I was a sixth grade language arts and science teacher in Norading America at the middle school there. So when I say that my heart is planted firmly in middle school learning, it truly is. I really love the age group and I love the kids and the staff that dedicate themselves to that energy and space. It's unique and wonderful. I'm a three-time golfer grad, so I'm a golfer fan for better for worse. And I'm just really looking forward to meeting everybody in the next couple of weeks, getting to dive in on some truly middle school model stuff that I get to work with Jeff and Amy on. I'm just really thrilled to be part of Monticello's team, so I'm grateful for the opportunity.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Applause. Got you up with some magic ware.
Thank you.
Jennifer Cruz in at the office has sizes. They're placeholders for now, but. Thank you very much.
Thanks Eric.
Thank you.
Yeah, here we go.
Get you on board. We have a few more speakers, including our next speaker that we'll introduce. And then at another board meeting, we have ALP Dean and ALP Dean at the, Dean at the middle school and then also a coordinator. So we still have some leaders to bring forward, so.
Excellent. It's coming fast. Next move on to adult meal prices. This is actually welcome. New food service, so this is exciting.
Before you go over, put the pressure on him right away and give him his back. He is known as Chef Tony very lovingly, so Chef Tony.
Thank you, thank you.
When I had the opportunity to interview, be part of the interview committee. I've never been so engaged and just, I was getting recipes. We were talking kids.
Had a good time. It's good to be here, I'm very happy to be here. I came up from the Glencoe School District and love the folks up here, can't wait to bring my food specialties to everybody here. It should be a lot of fun. And there was a change in meal prices this year for adults. You're going to four ninety-five a meal for lunch, is that up, is that slide in there? There it is. Two sixty-five for breakfast, four ninety-five, one from four sixty, four ninety-five. And the state makes that decision and they give it to us. Don't have a lot of choices. Any questions about it? Pretty straightforward.
Does anybody have any questions?
Do we sell a lot of adult meals?
You know, in the past you have and I think you will now. I'm actually doing some catering tomorrow morning, we're going to be back here for the new teachers. They have breakfast and lunch for the next two days with me, so yeah, so we're going to cook for them and they'll come down and get our food, I know they will.
Awesome.
All right.
And just before you, this agenda item, Tony, and just to kind of put this on your radar. Like kind of in the past, we, the food service managers come in and just talk a little bit how things are going, like maybe after a month.
Sure.
There's some initiatives that you have, directions you're going with, that would be awesome.
I will, absolutely.
Okay.
Put me on the calendar, I'll show up.
Okay, awesome.
You're good? You're good?
Appreciate it. So this is actually an action item.
I move to approve the adult meal prices as presented.
Adult meal, Jennifer, make a motion to approve the adult meal prices, seconded by Candace. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in name, motion passes six zero. Onto strategic plan kickoff. Eric's been working as admin, been working very hard on the strategic plan and continue to move forward with the direction of this.
Yeah, I think for for me, this is one of the proudest moments. I wish we had a band here. I wish we had, you know, the paper here because it's something that I've wanted to be part of. I want to be part of a district that has a clear message. I want to be part of a district that is able to take that message and have everybody working towards it. And I feel like this year, we're going to be able to do that. We're going to accomplish this together. The things that I want everybody to know, and I want the community to know, this will be part of many different communications across the community this year, but this isn't something to do a dog and pony show tonight and then to not live it. This is to live the strategic vision, the strategic plan, and make sure that we are able to help our students reach the full version of themselves. So that is what why we're here today. There's no doubt that if you're in the educational world, you've heard of John Hattie. He is a researcher who has done decades worth of research on collective efficacy. And then if you enjoy sports, you would be able to easily pick up a sport anywhere in the world and know that a strategic plan is a team coming together to execute a plan. And the team that does that the very best are the ones that are able to achieve the very most. So just going on to an overview of the strategic plan, the overview is reconnecting ourselves to several pieces that we had been working on for the four years. So an overview, when we look at this, is looking at our strategic priorities. I'll get to those in a second. Vision of a learner, which we worked on all last year. Observable impact, make sure that you're waiting or make sure that you're gathering information throughout a school year. So as every team developed goals for themselves, making sure that they have ways to see if they're working rather than waiting for annual test scores or some other measure that is too late if you wait for that. And then multi-tiered systems of support. We'll be talking about this here in a second as well. And then vision of a leader. This is the section of the puzzle that I think I'm the most proud of, but we need our leaders to know what the strategic plan is, and then they need to live it and make sure that they are part of it. So their evaluation is connected to the strategic plan so that now if we're all holding ourselves accountable, we know that we can give our students the very best. At any time, please stop me if you have questions. So the district mission statement, we've had mission statements, and it used to be on the wall back here. When I was at Pinewood, it was on my wall in a frame. And I think the things that I like as we put together this district mission statement, it's really nothing more than connecting what we're supposed to be doing to what we will go and do. And so the district mission statement isn't a lot of fluff, like a lot of them are. It's not perfectly maybe word choice, or all the words aren't exactly maybe as you're used to seeing, because all it's doing is saying that we are going to live our district strategic strategies, and we are going to also connect what we feel is best for our learners. So using the strategic priorities of teaching and learning, collaborative connections, innovation and leadership, and safe and healthy culture, Monticello School District is committed to producing resilient learners, critical thinkers, effective communicators, and persons of integrity. So that's the work that was done in that last year. So let's look at the strategic priorities. What are they all about? Well, that is the circle that that we modeled ourself after Simon Sinek. So when you look at a Y circle, the outside is your your what you're going to do, and then the next layer of a circle is how you're going to go do it. And a lot of business models, a lot of successful organizations use those two, right? You know what, if you're going to a store, what they're all about, and that's important. But the very best organizations actually focus more on the center part of the circle, and that's the why. Why do we do it? And we've had an unbelievable motto, every kid, every day. That motto, we want to make sure gets more clearly defined. So that's what we spent the last year defining that. So defining that middle part, what does every kid, every day mean? That is our vision of a learner. And vision of the learner are these community-developed attributes that we hope to see from all graduates as they walk across that stage. I know we have both and several principals who have been part of that graduation for many years, whether they're on the sidelines shaking hands or whether they're up front talking to graduating class. There is nothing more memorable than that experience. And so we need to make sure that we define that experience and not wait till they're in the high school before we define that experience, but define that experience with all of our pre-K through grade thirteen learners. And so we believe that these attributes will guide us. Not only will they guide us, but they'll also connect us to observable impact, goals and outcomes. What will we see our students doing? So it's not just about having words, but it's about connecting what we see students doing, if they're showing it, and what we see educators doing, if they're showing those visions of the learner attributes, and what will we see leaders doing if they're leading it? So these four attributes are absolutely going to be exciting for us to help build tradition around in the Monticello School District. And I think I'm just going to I'd like to pause here before I go to the next step and just know that these strategic priorities, if anybody, you know, there's going to be people watching at home, there's going to be people the first week of August who get to spend time with with myself and facilitator of learning Kail Burke, who's helped kick us off some with some of these concepts. But the important piece is I want people to know that they're not coming back to something that's brand new. They're coming back to something that we've been working on, that we that people have put their fingerprints on and that we all should believe in. We're using best practice to guide us. And as a district strategy, we are going to also be in, I'll use data to drive us. And that's where I'm going to make a switch to the next slide here now. When we talk about data, one thing that we need to do, and we need to do very well here, we need to look at ourselves, we need to look at ourselves frequently, and we need to see where students are at. I can tell you stories about my own children. I can tell you stories about my own classes. I can tell you stories about my own graduates. And I hope that as educators, we're defining our students by how how much we can help them reach the full version of themselves. We want our students to be at where they're at, whether it be academic, social, emotional needs, and we want to help them gain as much growth that they can. It should always be that every child is trying to gain at least one year's worth of growth. And you can't do that always by teaching the exact same way. So multi-tiered systems of support help us have a system where we can reach learners who are maybe at the higher end, and we can try help extend them to the learning of the standards. But we can also set up systems of support for our students who may be struggling with a concept or concepts and make sure that they have a place to, a system to support, whether it's in the classroom. That's got to be the first here. Our district, one of the things that we need to look at is systems of support are not places for kids to go and get fixed. Systems of support are to where you go back to that collective efficacy, where we're all working together to talk about each child and make sure that we're talking about them in a way that we can help them meet their their needs. And multi-tiered systems of support isn't a new word around our district either, something that we have been putting in place all over the district. And this year, we were just fortunate enough to be able to connect some of this work with some funding that will help each building be able to further develop their their systems. Like I said at the beginning, this isn't for me to sit up here and go through a dog and pony show and show a thirty-three page, thirty-two page document and bore everybody. It's it's for us to say that this is a starting spot. We're starting together. And we're taking steps together. Admin had this as a huge focus. They know how important this is. They know how important this is in their hearts because they know how important this is for kids. You can't win championships. You can't be, you can't meet students' needs unless you are all working together and you maximize the expertise of of your different leaders, your different teachers. People recognize within buildings strengths and are able to take those strengths of both the staff members, take the strengths of the students, but also help them fill in any areas of need that they may have. So we're excited to put all these together, not as individual things that seem overwhelming, but each building will be going slow. They will be looking at what they need to reach their learners. We're going to be using data more. Cindy Foshin and I are working with new teachers tomorrow. We scrapped our whole, pretty much our whole presentation that we used to do, and I was proud of it. I enjoyed doing that last one. But now we're teaching teachers right out of the get-go how to look at data, how to use data, and and make good decisions so that we can help kids reach their full potential. Just as a side note, I don't always do this because I saw some people might not really like when you do some kind of personal thing, but I like to use my own children because I know them the best. And so just as a closing statement of how this is needed, I give two different stories. My daughter Bailey was a person who read so much during the summer that her MAP score, that's the indicator that we used to use, when she took that test in September, was always higher than the one that she took in the spring. So the one in the fall, when she was basically just reading and teaching herself. And so what we always wondered is, is I wonder, wonder why? And and so we had a student who was was very eager in the summer, gave themselves what they needed. But then, you know, when you look at data, I wish I would have asked some questions, and I didn't want to because I just felt like I didn't want to be that educator that was asking too many questions. But we should be asking, what are we doing for those students who may already have a concept? And that's really, really important to do throughout a system. And we need to get better at that. And the same goes for my other child, Boris, who, when he came back from the summer, he didn't touch a book all summer, so he had the traditional summer slide. It was, he was very active in learning, but not doing it through books, doing it for experiential learning. And so he was a different type of learner. I think it's just important for all of us to know that plans like this are the best laid plans if we all are committed to trying to give every kid every day what they need. That's our first step in taste of the strategic plan today.
Any questions? I know you've put extensive amount of time into this, and we're discussing and moving forward. Obviously, it doesn't.
You'll see this coming forward a lot with data. Going to revisit it all year, work sessions here. We're going to hold ourselves accountable. You have to look at this as a board, have to hold me accountable. We haven't done that here. We're going to start doing that.
Excellent. Teaching and learning, move on to substitute rates yearly thing. Barb?
Good evening, everyone. I have put together some numbers and a proposal for our substitute rates for the upcoming year. We talk about these every August so that we can go into the year recruiting as many substitutes as possible, so we have a good supply. So you can see from the data that I provided that, you know, currently we're not low, but we're also not the highest payer of substitutes in our area. And the two districts that are in our cooperative and are definitely our big competitors for local substitutes. So our proposal is that we would increase substitute pay as it's outlined in the second table. So I'm proposing that we bump up our substitute pay by twenty-five dollars a day for our daily rates. And then our building sub rate goes up for a long-term sub goes up according to the contract. So that's in contract. We can't really adjust that more than what we have. And then our on-call building sub stays the same, which is the same as our retired teachers when they come back and the substitutes who work for us on a regular basis. So that's our proposal for tonight for teacher substitutes. And just know how important it is for us to have a good foundation to find substitutes as much as possible for our classrooms. In addition, if you go to the table at the bottom, you'll see our support groups also. We're proposing some increases in our support group substitute rates. You always have to keep in mind for these rates that we stay for our substitutes below our entry hiring rate. And so the proposed increases keep us below our entry rate, but push it up as much as we can so that we can make sure we have substitute custodians, secretaries, pares. And it's just important that we go in strong and try to have some backup help for our employees. Any questions?
Are we advertising right now for substitutes?
Yep. And we always post, and we bring, we've been stripping them in and in, but yes, up to this point, we've, we're really focused on getting our new staff on, but we will do a little bit more in the coming month as well to recruit more.
Are these increases anticipated to by Tina with her budgeting?
Yes, Tina has looked at these, and we're looking at ways to maximize our sub usage and and still be very smart about our dollars. Yes.
Do you currently have building subs? Are we kind of in the process of waiting to see?
We're just in the process of starting to talk about how we might use building subs, especially at the secondary level. And so you should hear some more about that in the coming weeks. Our principals are kind of working with their teams to figure out what would be a good sensible way to do that.
Could you describe just what a building sub is?
Well, in the previous years, we've used building subs. We've hired them, and they've come every day to a specific building. And during COVID, that was one way where we felt like we could contain exposures, get some consistency in place. So now we're feeling a little more comfortable with that, but we do have some needs for building subs, especially at our secondary level, where they have a lot more teachers, you know, in one space, and where we could possibly use someone to fill in spots for short-term absences as well. So teachers that need to leave for an appointment or things like that. So right now, we're just kind of working on what that'll look like.
So this is an individual that comes to work every day?
Yes.
If you don't need them, you send them home?
No, we always need them.
So the the rate of pay that's here, they're essentially a full-time worker?
Yes, they're a full-time worker. And I know at a lot of our schools with needing to have some academic recovery work to, if by any chance there wasn't a subclass, they could go in and help in our remedial programs and work directly with students to try to get them a little bit extra support.
Do you share them between buildings?
Last year, no. We actually know our building subs are assigned to one building, so they get used to the routine. They get.
Safety protocol.
Safety, oh, yeah.
And are they licensed teachers?
Yes.
So the building subs are hired to have a teaching license, but a regular sub does not have to have a teaching license, right?
They all have to have a substitute teacher license, all of them. It could be a day-to-day sub, or they could be a retired teacher who has a longer-term license.
Not wanting to go into too much details because I'll just, I'll just give an overview of of something that we're moving forward with very little detail, just but I think just to help your questions. So the high school needs to work with their staff. We, Barb did meet with them today at looking at some different ways to have multiple, multiple uses for building subs in a building. So like Barb said, we're moving out of COVID. What now what we could we do? So we, you know, worked together with admin today, get a little bit more time to vet that out, but we think we have some really good ideas that will help. Get a little bit more time to vet that out, but we think we have some really good ideas that will help student learning and also be very friendly on the budget.
So each building has one?
In the past, they, well, they've had up to
In the past, the middle school and high school have had two. And then we've had one in the elementaries and then we had some backup special ed teachers too that could kind of go where they were needed, so.
Do you provide benefits for a building sub? Building sub?
No, if they're hired as a building sub, they would not be on a teacher contract. They would just be a on-call, on-call type of worker.
They're not part of the
Substitutes are not, well, they are, but they're not. So their, their wages are what you have to approve. We tend to just run their contracts, the expectations according to the teacher contract, especially if they're here every day.
Thank you.
Do you have an idea of what the sub list looks like right now? Good, bad?
I think we're up about five or six from last spring, you know, with losing some and getting some new ones on.
I've had a lot of people with degrees, whether they work from home or whether they have responsibilities that they're juggling. We do seem to be getting more people get substituted.
People are coming back. I think it's been really challenging for people to sub, especially if they have children or grandchildren they care for. The last few years have been very challenging for them to commit to that, so seeing a lot more interest.
Any more questions for Barb? Okay, this is an action item.
I move to approve the substitute rates as presented.
Second then?
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded Kathy to approve the substitution rates as presented by Barb Wilson. All those in favor signify by
Aye.
A motion passes six zero. Next, we have a bunch of policies that we've been working, that the policy committee has been diligently, diligently working on. Holy cow.
Skip handbook?
I'm sorry, did I skip something? Oh, handbook, I'm sorry Barb.
No, I just wanted, I'll stay up here briefly.
I saw all that blue.
Yeah, I know, the policies, I'll let Eric handle those, but and the policy committee has been working really hard, but so I just wanted to mention that the middle school handbook has come, is coming back in front of you tonight. They took the time to add the extra policies, use some of the language from the high school handbook, which we talked about extensively. So I just wanted to give that little plug for the middle school handbook.
Now is our, now are they the same?
They're not the same, but they're similar.
Pertain to each school, but for the Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So we stuck with the policies, tried to refer to policy language like you recommended. And we'll keep working each year to improve them. So, you know, we'll, we'll talk with, between the middle school, high school, what, what more can we do to make them, make sure that you have that nice flow for families and kids, so.
And thank you for providing all the links to that, so that's awesome.
It's helpful.
That if you go online, you can just link to what you're actually looking at.
Got to give a huge shout out to all the admin because the unification that's going on in our handbooks is absolutely fantastic. I know the board asked for that. Being able to do that across the board is really going to, it's going to help students, right? When they and it's consistent from the time they enter school. And like Jeff said, it's also important, you can't have the exact same one. He used the word age appropriate, developmentally appropriate, that's so true. But yet, you know, your, your principles and core stay the same. Our principles, we're able to do in a, in a short amount of time this year to bring that forward and into a really great spot.
Any questions for Barb?
Or Jeff? All right.
Jeff?
Yeah, good.
And team, sorry. Okay, thanks Barb. Moving on, first reading of policies.
Well, I know Jeff and Barb have made mention to the work that the policy committee has done. This is a never-ending job and I know that in order to keep up and bring policies forward at the time they're supposed to, you do have to be very diligent at three to five policies per session. And then when you, you know, get behind and use some other things, then, then it might look like this to make sure that we have our, our ducks and our, our policies all in a row. So these policies have all come to us through MSBA as well as our curriculum department. And four of these, as noted on agenda, are our new district policies that are recommended by MSBA. Will help the guidance and clarity to our district. The majority of the other changes are minor in nature, with the exception of some more in-depth changes on curriculum policies. The policy committee has had an opportunity to do it and the policy committee has worked hard to get these to come forward at first reading. There are some others that they have, they're not as comfortable with, that they're still working through, that came through at the same time. So it's important to note that we're not just bringing forward these without an extensive amount of work. And we even are bringing some forward to the whole board now. We had one at that level last time. So anything that we may see as more than just some red line, small changes, we want to bring forward to our newer work session, which we did last time with, at least one policy. So, yeah, so policy six oh three, six oh four, six fourteen, both, and then six sixteen, six oh five, six oh seven, six oh eight, six oh nine, six eleven, six thirteen, six fifteen, six twenty-three, eight oh one, eight oh two, eight oh five, eight oh six are all policies that we believe that we can have tonight for first reading and make sure that we give the, you know, these policies time to, more time put on forth towards them behind the scenes. So if there are any questions tonight, we'll take questions. Have Cindy Foshin here, Director of Curriculum Instruction, but it's like we did in the past here. Principals are great resources as well. Any questions out of the gate?
If there are, when you're going through these policies, if there's questions, I think if you could order questions to Eric and we'll put them on for the next work session. Those are obviously a good time for us to discuss concerns we have about policies and ideas that we have for changes in policy and then put that on our next work session in September. Add to some agenda items that we need to discuss at that time, so. So if you're going through these and you have some concerns about where they're at right now, that will be a wonderful place that we can open up discussion at our work session before we move them forward on the second reading of the Boy, I'm just dropping the ball here, huh? Okay, well, we'll, does anybody else have questions about policy?
The only thing I would just ask is if, when I have just ideas, okay, I mean, that's what we should be doing. But if we could also email Clay and Cindy, just to make sure that we have that double checks and get working on anything that we need to as quickly as possible.
We will jump back to the MRS handbook. We need a motion to pass the new handbook, updated handbook.
I move to approve the middle school handbook.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Melissa to approve the middle school handbook as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion passes six zero. That leads us to adjournment.
It's all moved, second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jennifer to move, motion for adjournment at six forty PM on August fifteenth. Twenty-two motion, oh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion passes six zero.